You don't even understand.
Okay, please, please stop. Rebecca?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion.
Don't touch it. We shouldn't be voting on this.
Why are you voting for the someone who's voted to?
We have a motion.
So this council, but I made a motion.
I'm sorry. You're not following rules.
Talk about unbelievable.
Not what I'm saying.
How you going on the show?
There is decorum.
You lied about following rules and putting all the steps.
What the hell is that? It doesn't make any sense.
Say it one more time.
We can't pass it.
We're never gonna get.
Could you please?
Prove it, to table it.
Fees are waiting.
Please.
This is not, it's since we've been to come back.
And it's embarrassing for all of us that it has come to this, but we care about our city and we care about the future of it and industry does not.
I'm sorry.
But can we, can we please listen to what they've been saying and commenting? I don't see, you know why it had to come to something like this, and if we're gonna be adding amendments, let me add another amendment. Remove the exemption fee for the large industry water users, the 31 cents.
Need to remove the exemption on high volume water users. You're telling us that we're in embarrassment? You guys are selling all of our water away to high volume water users. They're the ones draining our resources and you guys are trying to put more water and embarrasses. We are residents of this city. We want to need water.
Prioritize the needs of ordinary residents instead of the needs of industrial consumers. Take more time to listen to the people, hear what we're saying.
Move on.
Let me ask you something. It's baffled me why this drought contingency wasn't done before now. We're two years behind. So I'm not real sure what the big rush is now. Do feel like because it's so late in the end of the day, we're gonna rush through this, and I don't like that. What about one week, Mr. Sinoni?
Hand watering and drip irrigation, which is not in the plan today. If council approved this tonight, you can always amend it in the future. It's not like once you approve it, we can never look at it for 10 years. So it's amendable, any council meeting, anytime we meet.
So it can be passed. You must amend, or you must look at it again, right, every five years, but it can be amended?
You can amend it.
You can amend it as many times as you want.
Can amend it anytime.
So the advantage, not advantage, but the, yeah, the, you know, it was for pros and cons would be that the changes, the amendments, which are, they're not as strict.
Right.
Compared to what's here today.
Right.
Would go into effect right away?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Because the first reading was already approved, so we're at the second reading today.
What did our guys change from last week till now when all those people came and talked to you guys? Did anything get changed by chance?
Yeah, yes, sir. So a couple of things that changed. So one of the things that we changed was we moved the moratorium for no new no new water meters to the water emergency stage. So right now, it's listed in the current plan, it's listed in stage three. We met with the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association, and they were very concerned about having that identified in stage three. After we talked to them, I mean, we recognized that stopping new economic development with building and putting in new water meters is devastating for the economy, so we recognized that, and so we moved it into what would be a, in the new plan or new proposed plan as a water emergency. So that, that's one change. The other-
On page four, number two of the memo regarding the drought contingency plan. Staff wants to move a necessary part of the plan from stage three to water emergency. If this is done, we will likely never get out of drought restrictions because the reservoirs will never fill back up if we keep taking more water out of them.
Water rates are going up, and they're gonna keep going up. Back to the drought contingency plan, there is one recent revision I wanted to comment on. In the latest update, the prohibition of applications for new water services was moved from stage three to stage four. My take on it is that it feels like we're selling water that we don't have, and I don't understand how that's gonna get us out of a drought or improve the drought plan, the contingency plan. To me, that's like taking out a car loan when you're on your last dollar, but I'm willing to hear why staff made this recommendation and why they think it is a good idea. I'm hoping the council will discuss this further and possibly amend it or leave it where it was before voting on it later today. That's my comment. Thanks.
Change that we made was for non-exempt surcharge exemption, large volume users, we tripled the surcharge cost, right? So in the proposed plan, up until January 28th, it was $1, $2, and $4 per 1,000 gallons, and now it's $3, $6, and $12 a thousand.
And the range then shows how much again?
$1, $2, and $4. And this was not a change since last week, but, or two weeks ago, but one of the changes in this newly proposed DCP is we have raised the optional surcharge for residents from 3,000 gallons a month to 7,000 gallons a month. So one of the things, and you know, we can talk about this in the presentation, but I get it, you know, it's late in the day, and we've got slides to show it.
Yeah.
But we listened, we listened to our community, and one of the things that we heard was a resident-first approach. And so that is absolutely something that we believe is designed to help limit the impact to the working-class family. 3,000 gallons a month absolutely hits the working-class family.
I just feel like, you know, we need at least one more week, like, one more solid week to get this approved. It's just, it's too, it's too fast. Okay, thanks.
Counsel?
And so, you know, just point out a few things. So we had the listening session from 6:00 to 7:30. We sat here for 90 minutes. It was, it was a great reminder to me and to my colleagues that we have an awesome responsibility, and we don't take that lightly every day. So hearing that from our community is a good thing. And so we listened intently, we took notes, and here were some of the general buckets that we put the categories into from what we heard. So we heard, certainly heard, you know, comments about industrial large-volume users. There were a number of folks that are not happy with drought surcharge exemption fund. What I, what I will tell you is, is that the drought surcharge exemption fund does not negate large-volume users from participating in being good stewards of drought conditions. So in other words, they can't do the same things that residents and commercial businesses can do. They can't irrigate outside. They still have to follow the exact same rules, they're not treated any different. And so we heard that, we heard that very loud and clear from the folks who were here on the listening session. Our recommendation from our team is that we keep the drought surcharge exemption fund in place because it contributes to a new water supply bucket of funds that the other customer classes are not gonna have to pay for in the future. So today, we've got $25 million sitting in that bucket. It's growing every year. One other comment that we saw was, you know, too much discretionary power to the city manager.
I want to pass, I'm okay with passing it.
And remember, we can pass it and then work on it and amend it. I mean, we can do both. I'm gonna ask that. So it's not, it's not like you have to wait. You don't have to wait a month. We can start talking about, really, without the rush. We're talking about a week, one week. This would come back in one week. So what you guys are wanting is not gonna take a week, based on what I've heard. Well, not based on what I heard. So my point to that is, we can amend this anytime we want and take time to look at the changes that we want to amend.
Okay, question. You're saying we can amend this? And right now, we're under the old plan, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So why can't we amend that and add drip and hand water? If we can amend it, I'll make a motion to do that.
But what are the other-
If that's true, if we can amend it, I see you're ready to go, aren't you, Maus?
But it-
He is, he's ready.
But Drew-
This is an amendment to that.
This is it.
This is it.
No, that's the old plan. That's the old plan. But we're not gonna do all of this, we just wanna add some stuff to the old plan, and then we'll approve the new plan after we go back over it.
But this, this is what this is?
No, it's not, it's the new plan. It's the new plan, it's new recommendations. And so what we, what I think we should do, we can kill two birds with one stone, we can get both things we want, we can still have more time to look at it, and then just add the watering and the drip. Is that possible, Mr. Sinoni?
I would say-
It is.
He says yes.
Yeah.
Okay, but is that going to-
It's gonna get us through.
Take care of everybody, I mean, all the people that-
Is that all we need to put in there?
Well, I guess I'm, I guess my question is, what, what do you want in the old plan?
I want to amend it. I want them to be able to-
But we have-
Start dripping and- There's a motion on the floor to postpone. Hand watering, the things that are gonna help save their companies, I want them to be able to do it now, and if we have one week, two weeks left, the rest of it, we can do it and approve the whole plan like you got and make amendments on it, or just approve the new plan. I'm trying to solve this thing, and I think it's a good plan. Don't y'all think it is? Y'all can't talk.
Don't, just don't clap, just kidding. Okay, so, we, well, hold on, let's just hold on, hold on there, because we have a motion.
Right, it's to postpone.
To postpone.
And did you say for a week, Council Member Campos, or did you, you want two weeks? Okay.
So what do you want, because we have a motion and a second.
Till the 25th, okay.
Continue that?
Do we have to make amendments first for the old?
Well, that's what I'm saying, what direction do we wanna go in?
Have this first, okay.
She can withdraw that altogether.
Yeah, you could just-
She can withdraw it altogether, and we start fresh, but-
What's?
Okay.
Okay, so you still wanna postpone? So we're gonna vote on the motion to postpone for two weeks?
I'm sorry.
Correct.
Okay.
Can you put your light on, please?
Till February 25th.
Okay, Councilmember Campos.
My original motion was to postpone for two more weeks, so that's, and I was second.
That's what you want to do, though?
Yes.
Okay, what's the plan over there on the end?
My plan is to make an amendment to the plan.
Well, this is your time.
The old plan, no, to the old plan that we've been living under all this time, to make sure that they can use drip, they can do hand watering, help me, what else did they need?
Okay, so moratorium on meters goes to water emergency, but, but then again, we changed stage four to a water emergency. So that, that would be something that we would have to include.
You're getting this, Rebecca, because I'm not gonna remember it.
Ma'am, well, we've got it, we have to vote, the motion to postpone is in order, the motion to amend is not-
And I can come back.
Yes, ma'am. So we just need to just get that motion to postpone out of the way, and the discussion really should be limited to the postponement. That's, that's what we-
Okay.
We need to be talking about right now.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to postpone for two weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Then Roy.
So I wanna understand this. If we make a motion to postpone, the changes that you were talking about in terms of the average user going from 3,000 to 7,000 wouldn't take place. So that could be another thing that if we go back to the old plan, that we would ask for an amendment? So, I mean, that's, it's kinda-
We're kinda getting to the point where we pretty much have everything that we've already put in the plan.
In the new-
I'm not sure what we're not putting in the, what we wouldn't include.
I wanna make sure I understood that.
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone, please submit your vote. On postponing for two weeks. Oh, go ahead. Okay, all in favor, say aye to postpone for two weeks. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed. But we lose.
Were you tied again?
No, it was three. Mark, what was your-
I voted nay.
Oh, did you?
Oh, so it's 4-4. So it was 4-4.
Can we do a roll call, please?
So now-
Just for clarity, a roll call. Okay, so-
Okay, you know what? All right.
Do a roll call?
I'm gonna change my vote, so.
All right, so I'm gonna call a roll. Councilmember Beretta?
No.
Campos? Cantu? Hernandez? Paxson is absent. Roy? Scott? Oops, no. Vaughn? And Mayor Wajado?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. It's postponed for two weeks.
Two weeks.
Can't talk about it anymore for two weeks.
No, 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 I asked if I can make an amendment, so.
If the postponement failed, but yeah, no, it was contention upon that, if the postponement failed. But you can, you can make it in two weeks. Are you gonna change it? Okay. I'm sorry if it failed, you can make it. I'm sorry, I meant if it failed. No, that's true, but the amendment can only be made after it fails.
Okay, but if she changes her vote and we make those amendments, then, then we can do it.
I'm sorry?
No, no, if, if she changes her vote, because I thought she was making the amendment that she talked about.
I'm sorry, Carolyn, I thought you understood that.
And she thought she was gonna make that amendment, because you guys were over there, Gil was directing traffic, so I thought you were making that amendment.
I was told yes.
Do you wanna reconsider it?
It wasn't if it was a yes or no, I was told yes, I looked right at Mr. Sinoni, he shook his head yes, and I trust that he knows what he's doing. A little confused right now, aren't we?
Okay, so-
I would reconsider the vote if you wanted.
Yeah, and then make the amendments, and then make your amendments that we were talking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that wasn't clear, Carolyn. Councilmember Vaughn, because she wants, so you don't wanna make your amendment in two weeks, you wanna make it right now? Okay.
Right, well, then I need to, I guess I need to do the same.
Okay, so make, make your motion to reconsider, the motion to postpone for two weeks, please. You want to reconsider it?
Will that be for both, Rebecca?
Ma'am?
For both? Both votes?
Who else?
Myself, well, but I'd rather go on record because I thought she was making an amendment, and that didn't happen. No, that's what, I need to reconsider my vote.
Okay, so that'll, that'll count.
Okay.
You're just, because we're voting on that motion to post, that's what passed. Okay, so you made the motion, and are you gonna sec, is someone gonna second that, please? The motion to reconsider.
Who?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
So you're gonna second it, very good. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to reconsider?
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Great, it passes.
All right, so now let's go back. So we're, now we've reconsidered, it passed, and now we're back to our motion to postpone for two weeks.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Can we do a roll call, because I'm-
Well, we're just retaking the vote.
So now we've reconsidered, we reconsidered it, so now we're gonna vote on it.
We're voting the same.
Yes, sir, that's right. So is that clear? I'd like to do a roll call, that would be a lot cleaner. Okay, so for passage of this motion to postpone, Councilmembers Beretta?
No.
Campos? Cantu? What happened? The amendment, yes. The amendment, that's what we're voting on. So Beretta, Campos, Cantu? So on the, so we're voting on the motion to postpone. It's like deja vu, we're voting on the motion to postpone for two weeks, because we reconsidered it, because Councilmember Vaughn wants to make a, an amendment. Right. Okay, so what did you, what was your vote, sir? Yes, okay, great. Hernandez? Paxson is absent. Roy? Scott? Vaughn? Mayor Wajado?
No.
Okay, so it fails. All right, so now we're back to your amendment. What's your amendment, ma'am?
Make the amendment that we add, allow them to hand water, drip, what was the other one?
To the original plan?
Restrictions on water meter to stage four. Allow for drip irrigation, stage three, hand watering to plants.
In stage three.
In stage three.
Okay, so you're adding that to what?
To the current, oh, yeah, to the current plan that exists.
Okay, so is that, is that in order?
What else?
What's on the table is the amendments to the following sections of the city code, 55-150, 55-152, 55-153, 55-154, and 55-155, and it's being heard on second reading.
Okay.
So you know we don't know what 55-1, 55-2, all that stuff is?
Yes, and, and what you have in front of you is the sections that relate to the city's drought contingency measures. The items that are highlighted are the changes that are being recommended by the, and the one you have before you that's in your packet is the changes that are recommended by city staff that changed from the last read, that would change from the last reading if you amend the highlighted items into it. Yes, it's the 55-150 through 155 of the city code. So that's, that's what, that's what's on the table, is that ordinance.
Make sure you have the February 11th red line.
Yeah, but Miles, couldn't the motion be that the council, this council wants to accept only the changes relative to drip irrigation and hand watering, and nothing else?
Well, since we're on second reading, you'd be deleting all the other stuff, that's not what that represents.
That's what the point is.
So we need to go through in writing and delete those items that don't represent what you want there.
Couldn't you say everything but the two items?
Okay, so here's the deal, we're, we're like mixing a lot of stuff up. I think what we need to do is table this whole thing as a whole, because the first reading included things that we'd have to pick out to customize it to those things. So let's just, I would advise that we So let's just, I would advise that we table it and then we use that time to fix it up exactly how we want it because this is not going to work. We're mixing, you know, we're mixing the first reading, what we passed, with the second reading, which we're changing, deleting and blah. It's just...
Can I make a quick summary that I think may help? So the only thing that has changed, we voted, council voted last time, January 28th, for all the things that we had on the 28th. And we've only added three additional items based on the input that we saw from the last two weeks. The first one was the moratorium. We moved the moratorium on new meters to the emergency water trigger stage. That is this slide right here. So that's one. And then the other one is, is for non-exempt large volume users, we've increased the surcharge, optional surcharge, from $1, $2, and $4 per 1,000 gallons to $3, $6, and $12 per 1,000 gallons for users who use over 12.8 million gallons a month. That is, those are really the only two changes. The change, the next change that you see right there was really just an editorial change. So that, that's really it. So if, if the council liked what they saw on January 28th, then this is the only two changes that were made since then.
Okay, Councilman Scott.
High-volume water users. Right, am I on?
Yes.
Non-exempt high-volume water users, those that requested not, that, that aren't part of the surcharge. So anybody using more than, you know, I think I calculated like 400,000 gallons, 500,000 gallons a day is going to be charged a surcharge of $6 or, it's six or 12?
Six in stage three.
Six in stage three. So anybody using more, and that's one of the things that I want to add on to the individuals that have been so passionate about coming to us on this, is that those that are large volume water users, using more than half a million gallons a day, are going to pay a surcharge of $6 per 1,000 gallons or, yeah, $3 in stage two, $6 in a water emergency. And, and what's the 12,000, what's the $12?
$12 is if we're in a water emergency.
Okay, 12, so, so stage two is three, stage three is six, so right now we're six. So some of our friends in San Patricio County are now going to have to pay the $6 immediately.
If we implement surcharges, yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's the thing, that's the thing I'm saying right now. So we're going to postpone that for two weeks. So Steel Dynamics is going to get a pass for two weeks. Steel Dynamics is going to get a pass for two weeks.
Guys?
So that's, that's the thing that I'm not going to support because I think those that chose not to be part of the surcharge, those are the ones that need to pay. Because they haven't, they haven't been team players through the whole thing. And I want to vote on that today. I want to make sure those individuals that weren't part of the surcharge pay. So I don't know what motion was made, but I just want to make that very clear.
Yep.
So I want them to start paying as soon as possible. And I want the meters to, all of a sudden now, so those to go into stage, to the water emergency and the same thing that we go into drip irrigation. I don't understand what the complicated process is because the thing is, is that I can tell you what a lot of these individuals that spoke when they came to public comp, did during the listening session, is their frustration is that they want those to remove the surcharge and they automatically start paying. So that's going to be a topic that's going to be, that won't be, that won't be, that won't be resolved in two weeks. I can tell you that right now. So right now, we can start charging those that chose not to participate right away. We can bring relief to the small business owners so that way they can, we can do the water in the lawns, the drip irrigation, the meters. So that way if we approve this today and then we can amend it in a month, we can have the listening, more listening sessions, but we can amend it in a month. All we're going to do is we're going to give small business the opportunity, just like I said, those three items. So if no motion has been made, I move for approval.
I've made a motion.
Okay. All right, I'll then, I'll vote that down. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, you ready to vote?
And it's two weeks.
I'm so confused right now.
I know. I don't...
Well, like I said, I think they ought to pay their fair share. That's what I want. That's what I want.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and we have a second on the motion.
Correct. So Councilwoman Hernandez made the motion, seconded by Ms. Councilwoman Campos to postpone for two weeks. That's what's on the floor. I know because we, it wasn't clear that Ms. Vaughn's amendment wasn't, it was out of order or, or, yeah, so not until after the reconsideration took place.
By postponing, right, by...
Before I did it, they'll tell me I can do it.
That's true.
I put that in the record.
Yeah. Okay, so postponing, yeah. Yeah.
Postponed table is the same thing, yeah, and under our rules.
You can do that again after it failed?
Because we reconsidered it, yeah.
No, we voted to reconsider it. Reconsidered and we voted it down. We're going to vote the same motion that we voted down again. Who's going to reconsider it?
Well, I mean, you want to make it a table, then? Motion to table?
Motion table.
No, not table, definitely. That's postponed, definitely.
They're going to motion table for two weeks?
Yeah. Just, we'll change it to table.
Postpone to table for two weeks.
Okay.
So what's the motion?
So it's a motion to table for two weeks. Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call vote. So Councilmembers Barera?
No.
Campos?
Yes.
Cantu?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Paxton is absent. Roy?
No.
Scott?
No.
Vaughn?
I'm saying.
Okay.
I know what I'm voting for. So the first is confusing in here with that.
It is. Mayor Wajardo?
No.
It's a tie. Yes, so it fails. So it fails. Okay.
Okay, I move for approval.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. As is, correct?
Yes.
Councilman? As is.
As is.
The original, okay. We have a motion in a second. Go ahead, Rebecca. Or, do you want us to vote here?
So I have that on here, but...
Those who didn't speak earlier, right.
Yes, that's right, for those who didn't speak earlier.
Oh, because it's, okay, we're going to open public comment. Come on down.
As is does not bring in any of the highlighted material you have in front, in that ordinance.
No, what was brought, yes.
What was brought to us.
Then you'd need to, because you've done the first reading, you need to do an amendment to bring in, to amend, to include the highlighted items. Because it was already adopted in the first reading.
All right, well, that's what you meant.
So moved, so moved second.
Okay, Mr. Rice?
Yes, Connor Rice, District Two. Obviously, this is, you heard your public comment from earlier today. I'm not a paid staffer, I will say that, make it very clear. I think this plan is, I think the city staff and the city water department is rushing this through and they're trying to use your landscapers as a buyout to say, do you want to help your small businesses or do you want to help or not? And the reality is, is you can amend the current plan and I think that that motion should be, should be made again because you can make it. It's already been posted, as Councilmember Hernandez made, it is on city, the item has already been posted to the public. You don't have to put that whole entire description to exactly what you're doing. If you ask any of the Open Meetings Act lawyers who already highlighted this, you don't have to tell them exactly what you're doing. So you can make the motion to amend the current plan as is. Otherwise, I'd vote to kill this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else? Mr. Paulson?
Mayor City Council, good evening. Bob Paulson, residing in Corpus Christi, District Four, also the executive director of the Coastal Bend Industry Association. Really, the point I want to make is just to go back to my comments from two weeks ago and the item that I had concern about. In the intervening two weeks, we've been able to review the plan multiple times, meet with the city staff multiple times, and resolve that issue, which relates to the economic incentive that's provided by a more, a harsher surcharge. We think that's been resolved in the current plan. The only other thing I'll say is that from our perspective, the industry perspective, there is no other items that we would consider material to pass in the plan today from our perspective and we support passage today. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone else? Yes, yes, come forward. Sorry.
Hi, Beatriz, District Two. I just wanted to second what was said by Connor Rice. There was a lot of confusion, but clearly you can amend what was, right? So, I mean, what needs to pass, could pass today and give us the discretion that I think a lot of business owners have been given the time. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Munster?
Yes.
Mark, did you already speak?
I talked about other topics earlier.
Is that correct?
Yes. If you could amend the current plan now, why wouldn't that offer to the irrigators and all the meetings with them? If that was the option this whole time to amend the current plan, why was that not done? That's what I'm understanding. That was the whole reason that you're trying to get this passed was for them? If there was, if that was available the whole time, what was those meetings about? I don't, I don't understand that, right? So I thought that using the small business owners was already...
Mr. Munster, you did speak on the drought contingency plan.
Oh, he did?
A lot of stuff, this is not like other phone rules.
Mr. Munster, you're not lying in these chambers, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry, you already spoke. Thank you.
Is this the vote to approve the DCP?
Yes. Well, I mean, that's what we're... They're going to be voting to accept the highlighted, I guess.
Yeah, what's recommended here and the, right, this is what we're voting.
The highlighted sections prior to accepting the DCP, that's, that's...
Everything that's in here is what we're voting.
How can you be voting to approve a five-year plan after everything?
Mr. Munster.
I don't understand.
Mark, pardon me, Mark, you've already spoken and we just got, we got to follow the rules. It's been a really long day. So thank you, thank you.
It's a five-year plan, it should not be going forward.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're going to follow decorum. Guys, let's please follow decorum. It's the rules. Please, please. Ma'am, ma'am, please stop talking.
You should not be voting to approve this plan, please.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so, please stop. Please, you're breaking decorum, ma'am, you're breaking decorum.
We care, we care, I don't care. Y'all broke the decorum fifteen times, you can't even, you don't even understand our own rules.
Okay, please, please stop. Rebecca?
Yes, we have a motion.
Don't touch it, we're...
We were...
Why are y'all voting for this?
We have a motion. So this Councilwoman Barera made a motion to approve and then the city attorney brought up that we do have highlighted sections of the ordinance that do need, that the council needs to accept into the... Into the ordinance, isn't that correct, Mr. Riesling?
Yeah, the council needs to make an amendment to, because it's been adopted already on first reading. In order to get that into second reading, the council needs to amend the ordinance to include the highlighted items.
Yes, so that's what we would do, a motion, it'd be a motion to amend.
To amend, to approve, and to include the highlighted items. Yeah, that's a motion to amend.
So Mr. Barera, that is your motion then? Okay. Mr. Scott, are you seconding that?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I advocated to expedite this. The staff thing, I think it was council-driven because we cared about the landscapers and the, and the nurseries. And I also like that we added the surcharge for people that are using too much water.
Ma'am, ma'am, please sit down.
And then finally, I like the fact that...
Please sit down.
I respect you.
No, there was, there's a time, there's a time, we just closed. Ma'am, please have a seat, please.
We have been pushed to the point of like frustration, this is not for doing this because of wrong.
Ma'am, this is, you're, you're breaking, please, just follow the rules, that's all we're asking.
No, I'm sorry, this is ridiculous, y'all are not, this is not at all.
There's a way to be heard and that was earlier and already today.
Yeah, unfortunately, y'all scheduled public comment, I had a really unfortunate time to sit, like, I wasn't able to take it, I was in a public...
Thank you, please, please.
Okay, Councilman Scott?
Y'all, we respond to all the water running out, stop selling off our water. Stop selling off our water. What is the point? Other thing what's happening is unless the city man just walked out and we got to the water, y'all don't listen. Y'all don't listen. I like the fact that we're expediting to take care of small businesses and I like that ability to move...
Please, please help us, sir, please help us.
Y'all are prioritizing polluters over people. Again, this is a living resource.
This is just not the way, this is unbelievable.
I'm sorry, y'all, y'all...
Talk about unbelievable.
There's decorum here.
Time to go, let's go.
There's decorum.
You lied about following rules, y'all, you're a small business. This is embarrassing for y'all.
I don't, I just want to say, I appreciate, I wanted to expedite it because I wanted to take care of the small businesses. I like that there's surcharges for heavy water users, residential, commercial, and I like we closed the loophole on those that chose not to participate in that additional fee and I like the fact that we move, we move the meter down to emergency as opposed to three. So it did the things I wanted and I'm sorry if it caused any...
No, no, it did not, it did not. And anyway, okay, so we have basically the, what we were handed today in the, on the agenda. What we were handed on the agenda, that is what, all the red line, correct? And that can be amended again later.
This is Councilwoman Campos. Okay, but everybody has spoken 15 times on this, which is okay because this is a big topic, but we're, we're, so we're, Councilwoman...
We need more time, we need more time, please. We can't pass today, we're never going to get...
We have never seen your argument before.
We need more time, please. This is not incentivizing to go back.
I know, I know. Y'all want to go next? Let's just get this over with. Next two, stand. Okay, Mark?
This is uncomfortable.
Okay, we're, I'm, I'm, we're breaking decorum, so we're moving on.
Not just our livelihoods, but the livelihoods of the industry. Polluters, and it has come to this. It is embarrassing for all of us that it has come to this, but we care about our destiny and we care about the future of it and industry does not.
I'm sorry. But can we, can we please listen to what they've been saying and coming? All we were asking is for a two-week delay, that's it. I don't see, you know, why it had to come to something like this. And if we're going to be adding amendments, let me add another amendment. Remove the exemption fee for the large industry water users, the 31 cents. Let me add that one to the amendments.
I just seconded Roland's amendment. I don't know why you're looking at me, I didn't. I just seconded that amendment. That's the only thing I know that's on the table.
Right. Okay, so, Ms. Whata?
I seconded his motion to do this. Do this. I haven't read this, this is brand new today. Do you understand?
I know, it is.
I understand, it's on my list. I would love that. I'm on my list.
Okay, so...
It's today, February 11th. Yeah, that's because the day we're approving.
Okay, so now I understand there's a motion to amend, to exempt, to remove?
The exemption fee for large industry water users.
Okay, so is that, is that one of the highlighted sections? Because we're talking about the highlighted sections.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a second. Okay, okay, so there is no second. All right, the motion fails.
You need to remove the exemption on high-volume water users. You're telling us that we're an embarrassment? You have been selling all of our water away to high-volume water users. They're the ones draining our resources and you have... More water if there's need, more time, if there's a need, 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 if there's a Thanks for everybody who showed up last week at the public comment hearing. I really think that Corpus Christi Water held that meeting in bad faith. There were 33 speakers. Pretty much everybody called for about the same thing, a resident-first approach, a small business, business-first approach to the DCP. And as reflected in the current draft, none of those concerns were really addressed and it remains largely the same. One of the first things Drew Molly said at the meeting was that the DCP is a business plan. But if you look at the TCEQ's definition under GI-630, it lays it out pretty clear. It's a conservation plan. It's not a business plan. The reason we're running out of water is because we're treating the DCP as a business plan. Continuing to sell water to industry with no curtailment. The only way we can turn course right now and actually conserve water is by forcing industrial curtailment from high-volume users and by eliminating the drought surcharge exemption fee. We have to repeal the exemption. We're not going to conserve our way out of water, just the residents. It's not going to happen. There's no clear trigger for a drought emergency or a water emergency, which the GI-630 also lays out and says, quote, "A DCP includes triggers for each drought stage which are typically based on water supply or demand," unquote. You can't leave that decision up to a city manager. And respectfully, after the Chris Six article that came out about the office playing favorites in its hiring practices, public trust is tanking. I don't think anybody wants a subjective declaration of a water emergency. We need a combined reservoir storage level at which that takes effect. 10%, 15%, whatever that may be. With that being said, I want the council to table the DCP vote and have another listening session. Same thing. You guys have to be there to listen to us. There have been people practically begging for a seat at the table who have been kicked to the curb by Corpus Christi Water when you guys meet with industry all the time. I'm glad the irrigators are getting what they're asking for because they matter too. But ExxonMobil is not going to conserve water for us to drink. It's just not going to happen. There needs to be way more scrutiny put on the city manager and Corpus Christi Water when it comes to conservation. The plan is two years late. I know we keep saying this, but it's two years late. Take the time. Do it right. Stop bending over backwards for industry while the rest of us get screwed.
Torres, District 2. What I handed out to council was a list of 114 people who took the time out of their day to send an email to their council members and all three at large, as well as the mayor. However, I'm assuming the city now utilizes a spam blocker of some sort that blocked residents from exercising their constitutionally protected right to free speech. So, I urge each council member who cares about the protection of this right to look into this. And so, I'm going to now read the email that, again, 114 people took the time to send about the drought contingency plan. Writing today to request that the city of Corpus Christi take immediate action to meaningfully reduce the water usage from the highest volume water consumers in the coastal bend and end the exemptions that industrial water customers benefit from. Residents of Corpus Christi are waking up to the fact that industrial water users are draining the vast majority of our water resources from the reserves and recognizing the favoritism that they receive from city council. As the new drought contingency plan is being discussed currently, we'd also like to make clear what our demands are to create a fair and equitable plan that prioritizes the water needs of residents over the water quote-unquote "needs" of corporate partners. End the drought exemption for high-volume water users. Require that they curtail their water usage so that we can recuperate our water resources. Remove the restrictions and penalties placed on residents and small businesses so that we are less affected by the consequences of the irresponsible and wasteful business practices of corporate partners. And it is no coincidence that as the Exxon Sabeck plant began its operations in 2022, the city fell into a drought a few short months later. If you look at the five corporations with the greatest water usage, Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, Valero, Flint Hills, Lion Del Bacell, and Occidental Chemical, they use a combined 365, I'm sorry, 36.5 million gallons of water a day. I'm more than happy to forward the spreadsheet with where everyone's addresses and emails are like clear so you can see which of your constituents actually sent you the email, as well as the rest of the email. With the rest of my time though, I would like to again reiterate the request that we have another listening session. Again, this plan is two years late. You are showing the fact that you favor people who aren't critical of you. The reason why these irrigators and these landscapers are in the situation that they're in now is because, I'm sorry, the council, the city manager, the water department has not done their due diligence. It is because you put us last. That is the reason we're here. And we don't have to be if you would just work with us. So, in addition to extending the vote, I'm sorry, pushing the vote back so you can have another listening session, meet with the community groups that have been coming for a decade warning you that this day was going to come.
I'd like to start off by reminding the room that we have been waiting for a revision to our drought contingency plan for about two years now. And that was way too late. But with that in mind, I want to make it clear that I'm aware that asking city council to table the vote on the DCP seems like a contradiction. However, we still have major concerns with the drought contingency plan. There is no mandatory trigger to enter the water emergency stage and the drought contingency plan still allows for high-volume water users to wastefully drain our water sources at the discretion of our city manager who clearly displays his favorability towards large polluting corporations. The vote needs to be tabled until you can figure out a solution to require high-volume water users to meaningfully curtail their water use who, let's state factually for the record, are by far the largest drain on our water resources. I spoke to a community member recently and explained my position on the DCP that I just explained to you, including my belief that industry should curtail their water use, to which they responded by saying, they can't just not use that, that amount of water. They can't just use less water. They need a certain amount of water to maintain their operations. And this, to me, is such a telling statement. I mean, no wonder y'all refused to mandate a water usage limit for industry because then y'all would be responsible for losses of jobs and revenue. And my heart really does go out to all the industry workers who would be affected by those losses. But the real harsh truth is, the fossil fuel industry was never sustainable. The fossil fuel industry could never last. And if this man-made water shortage isn't a resounding wake-up call that the city of Corpus needs to scale back its mission to expand the fossil fuel industry in the coastal bend and recognize the consequences of these unsustainable business practices and their impacts on the very real climate crisis, you must be either willfully denying those consequences or you are unfit to continue to serve on this council. Thanks.
Here today to voice my opposition to the adoption of the drought contingency plan. Bye, Peter. A solution that only perpetuates the problem is not a solution. It amounts to nothing more than ticking off a box on a checklist. It's apparent that the residents and environmental sustainability are last in line in consideration. Heavy-volume water users make profits on scales that you cannot conceptualize. They do not need your help, be that reduced rates, exemption fees, pilot payments, whatever. They don't need your help. Stop favoring them. It's embarrassing. I would also like to address a comment made by a city official who just left, that myself and others are the anti-anything crowd. Statement of fact, we love our city. We love our community. We love our bays. We love our wireless. We would like to see these things be centered and at the forefront of decision-making. To characterize our love, our concern, our compassion, our empathy as anything else is dishonest and myopic. Every decision that is made today has broadening impacts tomorrow, the day after, so on and so forth. Poor decision-making made in the past is what has led us to this point. Do not continue that legacy. I ask that you table the option of the DCP to allow for input for changes that are more equitable for residents, local businesses, and the environment.